Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader, it's all yours.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of February 27th, 2025. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I would like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us today. During the stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support for any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Abreu.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher.
Yeah.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. De La Rosa. Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Present.
Mamarado.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Moya.
Present.
Thank you.
Here.
Present.
Osay.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Present.
Sanchez.
Here.
Stevens.
Present.
Vernikov.
Here.
One.
Here.
Thank you. Ariola.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. I want to raise two members that as of right now, we must remain, oh, I can, we can scratch that. Uh, thank you. And so today, we will now have the invocation, which will be delivered by Bishop George Shorts of Pilgrim Cathedral of East New York, which is located at 590 New Lots Avenue in Brooklyn.
I greet you in the presence of the Lord God Almighty, and it's an honor to be here today. There are many changes, many things happening, but hold fast because the Lord is with you and he's on your side. Let's take a moment to pause while I ask the wisdom and the power of God to be in this assembly council. Gracious and sovereign God, we come before you today seeking your presence as we gather to serve our community. We ask for your guidance over this meeting, that our words be filled with wisdom, our actions be led by integrity, and our decisions be made with fairness and justice for all. Grant the protection and strength of our city officials, leaders, and public servants as they carry the responsibility. May they lead with discernment, compassion, and deep commitment to the well-being of every resident in our community. We ask for your covering over our city, families, businesses, schools, and neighborhoods. Let peace dwell within our streets. The prosperity grow within our borders, and unity be the foundation of all we do. May this meeting be productive, collaborative, and filled with purpose. Guide us in every decision and every decision that we may serve with wisdom, humility, and a heart for the people that we serve. No weapon formed against us shall prosper, and every tongue that rise against us shall be condemned, in Jesus' name. Thank you.
I would now ask Councilmember Chris Banks to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Archbishop George Malachi Shorts is the Senior Pastor of Pilgrim Cathedral of East New York and an influential ambassador of God's kingdom. He's the spiritual son of Archbishop Roy Brown and serves on the Board of Bishops for Pilgrim Assemblies International. Saved at the age of 14, Archbishop Shorts was mentored by late Bishop, uh, late Bishop Brown and began his ministry in 1983. Over the his, over the years, he has held various roles, including president of Pilgrim Church Choir, Christian Academy Instructor, and a district elder. He became the senior pastor in 1993 and was consecrated bishop in 1994 and was elevated to Archbishop in 2016. Known for his prophetic ministry, Archbishop Shorts delivers timely messages about faith, deception, and holding fast in changing times. His leadership is recognized for his strengths, faith, and spiritual guidance, and he is deeply respected by the members of his church for his commitment and example. I make the motion to spread today's invocation on the record. Thank you.
We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Shaheen Hanif.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of February 13th, 2025 be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
Pre-considered Ms. 111 and 112, council budget.
Finance.
Positions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M113.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Yes.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brewer. Caban.
Aye.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Councilmember Felice, land use call-ups.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Mamarado.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
I vote no on LU244, LU245.
Councilmember Mealy's land use call-ups.
So no on all.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley. Rivera. Salam.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye on all.
Williams.
How about aye?
One.
Aye.
Ariola.
I vote aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 38 in the affirmative and one in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by discussing the dire need for leadership right now. The events of these past few weeks in our city have been troubling. The recent resignation of four deputy mayors who managed practically all of our city's agencies is a development we cannot afford. That is why I called for Mayor Adams to step aside. The stakes are too high for us to have a diminished mayoral administration. We need an administration that can sound the alarm about what is at stake and work with the city's partners to protect New Yorkers. The federal budget proposal passed by the Trump-controlled Congress this week is another action that would hurt families in our city and across the nation by defunding health care, food assistance, and other life-saving programs. It would shut our hospitals and health clinics, hurting the health and safety of people across our city and country by deeply cutting Medicaid that provides health care to more than 70 million Americans. Up to 36 million Americans could lose their health care. Over 41 million Americans depend on SNAP food assistance that this proposed federal budget seeks to cut. These are actions that would be an attack on families and make life less affordable. This all comes as the proportion of New Yorkers living in poverty is almost double the national average and has been increasing. One in four children is living in poverty. And this federal budget is slashing resources for working families, all to pay for tax cuts for the wealthiest, as the richest person in the world, who no one elected, attacks services for working families. Most of these tax cuts would go to the wealthiest 10% of the nation, half of which would go to the top 1%, earning over $700,000 a year. This budget proposal only follows other actions by the Trump administration to hurt all Americans and New Yorkers. They have cut the public health workforce at a time when we are grappling with spikes in the flu, norovirus, a bird flu outbreak, and the spread of other diseases. They have attempted to wreak havoc on our public transit system by interfering in a congestion pricing plan that was already approved by the federal government with no plan. It would leave New Yorkers to pick up the pieces from the removal of budgeted resources for our public transit system. They even went as far as cutting funds and staff for the federal health program that supports survivors of the 9/11 attacks. Donald Trump and Elon Musk only reverse course after tremendous outcry, but uncertainty, uncertainty still remains. This is further proof that we must raise our collective voices to defend our values and the people of this city and country. The new administration is destabilizing our city and a nation at a time when families can least afford it. Trump's agenda to sow chaos and fear is not only making our communities less safe, it's also hurting our small businesses, workers, and local economy. Again, none of this is making life more affordable for working people. We must be prepared to defend the institutions and programs that protect our families, communities, and this city. There is a lot of work ahead of us, but this council is committed to fighting for New Yorkers and their needs. We are mourning the death of six New Yorkers who died in fatal fires over the past several weeks, including incidents of dis, in the districts of Councilmembers Palladino, Zhuang, Hudson, and Salam. Each death represents a significant loss to our families, communities, and city and our hearts are with their loved ones. On February 18th, our city tragically lost two dedicated sanitation workers on the same day. Michael Biusu, who worked on Staten Island, served our city since 2000. Nelvern Samuel, who joined the Department of Sanitation as an enforcement agent over a decade ago, served as a sanitation worker in Queens. Our hearts are with their families and loved ones and the entire DSNY family during this difficult time. Our city is mourning their loss, but we will never forget their immense contributions in public service. Next, I want to take a moment to honor the memory of Lee Bang-Jun, a revert, a revered figure in the judo world who passed away last week at the age of 101, here in New York. A dedicated teacher and mentor, he shaped generations of athletes and Olympians. Our thoughts are with his family, friends, and students. Today is Dominican Independence Day. New York City is proud to be home to a dynamic Dominican community. It is critical that we honor the many contributions of our vibrant Dominican community to our city and beyond. And last night, we hosted a Dominican Republic Independence Day celebration right here in council chambers, and we thank the council members who hosted this annual celebration. March 1st is Independence Movement Day, an important day for our Korean-American community in commemoration of the March 1st Movement for Liberation and Independence. Please join our Korean-American community in celebrating this important day. March is almost here, everyone, and that means we're celebrating Women's History Month. I am always proud to lead our historic Women Majority Council, which has demonstrated to the city and the world what strong women's leadership looks like. Women are the cornerstone of society and the backbone of our families. When women are healthy, safe, and have access to opportunities, we all succeed. I look forward to continuing our progress together to advance solutions to support women across this city and beyond. Happy Women's History Month. March is also Greek American, American History Month and Irish American History Month. We look forward to celebrating the contributions of our Greek and Irish communities here in New York City and around the world. Before we continue, please join me in wishing a happy birthday today to Councilmember Yusuf Salam. And a happy early birthday to our Majority Whip, Silvita Brooks Powers. Finally, colleagues, please do join me on Tuesday, March 4th at noon for my final State of the City address as the Speaker of the New York City Council. We'll be at the beautiful Jazz at Lincoln Center, and I hope to see all of you there. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items, 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue rezoning, also known as the Arrow-Lennon Proposal. This proposal will facilitate the development of two new residential buildings in Councilmember Hanif's district. With the council's modifications, the two buildings will each be 10 stories tall and include 250 housing units, 100 of which will be permanently affordable. The project includes access to subsidized space for a childcare center and a domestic violence service provider. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for three lots in Councilmember Stevens' district. A pre-considered resolution also sponsored by Councilmember Brannon establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Gutierrez's district. We will also vote on the council's fiscal 2026 proposed operating budget, $84.7 million for personal services and $30.3 million for other-than-personal services or OTPS. Today, we'll also vote on the following pieces of legislation. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Lynn Shulman calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A2605-S4801 relating to the, to restoring the state aid reimbursement rate to no less than 35% for identified core public health services provided by a municipality in New York City. We thank our staff members Christopher Pepe, Sarah Suter, and Joshua Newman. Introduction 794A, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require that appointments or recommendation for youth board members be made with best efforts to ensure that appointees have demonstrated relevant experience in the area of youth welfare. Additionally, this bill would require that, to the extent practicable, at least three members of the youth board be, uh, between the ages of 16 to 24 to ensure actual youth representation on the board. We thank our staff member Christina Yalamati. Introduction 1101A, sponsored by Councilmember Yusuf Salam, would require the NYPD to publish information on its website to help the public understand what constitutes identity theft and how to report it. The department would also be required to train officers on responding to and investigating reports of suspected identity theft. Thank you to our staff members Josh Kingsley and Chad Benjamin. Resolution 561, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to create a statewide public guardianship system to address current inequities and deficits and to safeguard vulnerable New Yorkers in need of protective arrangements. Introduction 1092A, also sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, would require the Department for the Aging in consultation with the New York City Office of Technology and Innovation and the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to develop printed and digital informational materials to educate older adults about internet scams, phone scams, phishing scams, financial literacy, and end-of-life preparation. In addition to posting a digital version of the materials on their website, DIFTA would be required to distribute the materials to homebound older adults and ensure older adult centers distribute them in their facilities. Thank you to our staff members Christopher Pepe, Chloery Rivera, Julia Goldsmith-Pinkham, Kristi Dwyer, and Simul Hamid. Introduction 1126A, also sponsored by Councilmember Salam, would require the Department of Sanitation or another administering agency to distribute official NYC waste bins to owners of eligible buildings, which include those with up to two dwelling units where the building owner is enrolled in a New York Star or enhanced Star tax benefit program. This bill would also require DSNY to establish a program to reimburse owners of eligible buildings who purchased official NYC waste bin on, before August 1st, 2026. Introduction 498A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Abreu, would require DSNY to collect organic waste from community gardens upon request. Community gardens would be able to make such requests through an online application portal. Thank you to our staff members Morgan Barrett, Ricky Chala, and Dirk Spencer. Introduction 1061A, sponsored by Councilmember Farrah Lewis, would amend the Department of Corrections semi-annual reports on alleged incidents and investigations of sexual harassment and abuse to require a unique identification number for each alleged incident. It would also require DOC to provide a justification for not reporting any substantiated allegations to a district attorney's office. Thank you to our staff members Natalie Melzer, Josh Kingsley, and Jeremy Whiteman. Introduction 565A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the Campaign Finance Board in consultation with the Board of Elections and the Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence to develop guidance on the procedures under the New York State Elec, Election Law for making a voter record confidential and for voting by special ballot. The bill would also require ENDGBV to distribute that guidance to family justice centers and to provide survivors with information on how to get assistance in preparing and submitting written statements to the Board of Elections to make their voter records confidential or establish their eligibility to vote by special ballot. Thank you to our staff members Jay Ostry-Gonathy, Erica Cohen, and Rachel Cordero. And introduction 9B, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, would require the Administration for Children Services to provide information about legal services for parents or guardians after ACS makes contact with them for the first time at the onset of an ACS child protective investigation or an ACS child's protective response. Thank you to our staff member Christina Yalamati. Thank you all for your attention. I turn it back over to, into your capable hands, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you so much, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Brewer, then Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, colleagues. Today, the city council will vote on Intro 1061, a critical piece of legislation to bring long overdue accountability to our correctional system and address the persistent crisis of sexual abuse at Rikers Island. For far too long, those in custody, particularly women and LGBTQ+ individuals, have endured harassment, assault, and abuse with no accountability. More than 700 incarcerated women sued the city last year under the Adult Survivors Act, exposing a pattern of systemic sexual violence by jail staff, wardens, and even medical personnel. Yet, our current system has failed to ensure transparency or justice. Intro 1061 directly confronts this failure. It mandates the Department of Correction to assign unique identifiers for each incident and victim, clarify reporting procedures, and provide justifications when substantiated cases are not referred to district attorneys. These measures will close longstanding gaps in oversight and demand accountability where there has been no silence. An audit by the city council's data team has shown that the department's reporting practices are deeply flawed, riddled with vague terminology and lacking transparency. This bill ensures that no allegation of sexual abuse is ignored. I thank Speaker Adams for prioritizing this legislation and urge my colleagues to vote yes on Intro 1061 today. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Hudson, then Stevens.
Thank you very much. Intro 565 of 24 is called the Voter Confidentiality for Domestic Violence Survivors Bill, and this legislation builds upon the critical 2021 law signed by Governor Hokel, passed by the legislature, which enables survivors of domestic violence.
by the legislature, which enables survivors of domestic violence to request confidential voter registration directly with the Board of Elections by passing the court process. In the past, when people who had been, are survivors of domestic violence, they wanted to vote, they had to go through court, and you know darn well, that's not going to happen. So while this state law represented a significant step forward, many survivors remain unaware of how to access these protections. This law requires city agencies, particularly those serving survivors through the family justice centers, and there are quite a few that do that, to provide clear guidance and resources on how survivors can ensure their voter registration remains confidential and how they can vote by special ballot. I assume most people know that if you are a survivor, you are likely to be in a safe house, you are likely to have an order of protection. But the worst thing is to have your attacker, the person who has been your main opponent and has hurt you in the past, find your address. They are likely to return. So the idea here is to not have that happen. I certainly want to thank Cynthia Hornig from our office, the people mentioned by the speaker in the speaker's office, and then groups like Crime Victims Treatment Center, Common Cause, Legal Women Voters, Muslim Community Network, Sanctuary for Families, Voices of Women Organizing, New Destiny, Safe Horizon, and the Campaign Finance Board. The bottom line is, we want people to vote, but we don't want them to get killed for doing so. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Stevens, then Salam.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader, and good afternoon. Today, I would like to briefly discuss Intro 1092, which the council is voting on today. Intro 1092 is a seventh bill in my Agent Place 2.0 package to pass the council. This bill expands education on elder fraud and financial literacy for older adults throughout the city and establishes requirements for the Department of Aging to develop printed and digital informational materials to educate older adults on internet scams, phone scams, and phishing scams, as well as provide quarterly guidance to older adult centers about emerging scams. Additionally, Intro 1092 would require the department to develop printed informational materials to educate older adults about financial literacy and end-of-life preparation. Intro 1092 will ensure our older adult population has access to the resources they need to recognize potential scams, report fraudulent activity, and protect their financial well-being. In 2023, older adults reported losing $1.9 billion to financial fraud and scams, but the Federal Trade Commission believes the real number could be as high as $61.5 billion. By equipping older New Yorkers with knowledge, we empower them to make informed decisions and to seek help when needed. As the older adult population continues to rise and technology continues to advance rapidly, we must do everything in our power to establish the necessary safeguards to protect the well-being of all older New Yorkers. I urge my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens.
Today, we take a critical step forward by voting on the pages of bill Intro 794, which will require the New York City Charter to formally establish a youth board. This legislation mandates that appointment and recommendation board members prioritize individuals that demonstrate experience in youth development. Most importantly, it ensures that at least three members of the board are between the ages of 16 and 24, giving young people direct voice in shaping the policies that affect their lives. Far too often, decisions about young people are made without youth in the room. I've seen this firsthand throughout my years in youth development, and even more upon entering City Council. Policies programmed and budget aimed at people cannot be truly affected if they are not crafted without their input. If we are serious about investing in next generation, we must do more by just talking about their future. We must include them in shaping it. Their voices are not just unviable, they are essential to building a more just and equitable forward-thinking city. As representatives, we are responsible not just to lead, but to create a system that uplifts and empowers those who will one day take our place, perhaps sooner than we think. Ensuring youth representation is not just the right thing to do, it is necessary for a stronger and more inclusive New York. As Chair of Children and Youth, I am proud to champion this effort alongside my colleagues. Our commitment to uplifting young New Yorkers will build a gap between city leadership and the voices that need to be heard, ensuring that every decision made truly reflects all the needs of our residents. Let's stand together to make this clear. New York City youth deserve a seat at the table today, tomorrow, and always. Thank you. And I encourage all my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Salam.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Today, two of my bills are being voted on: Introductions 1101-A and 1126-A. Another step towards strengthening public safety and protecting New Yorkers from growing identity theft as it relates to 1101-A. This ensures that the NYPD provide clear, accessible information to the public on identity theft, what it is, how to protect yourself, and most importantly, how to report it. In addition, this bill requires specialized training for officers to properly receive and investigate identity theft complaints, ensuring that victims are met with the support and action they deserve. Introductions 1126-A ensures that homeowners in buildings with up to two dwelling units who are enrolled in the New York State STAR or Enhanced STAR tax relief program receive official New York City waste bins at no cost. Additionally, for those who purchased these bins before August 1st, 2026, a reimbursement program will be established. This is about fairness, accessibility, and making sure that we are not burdening our residents as we work towards a cleaner city. Thank you to the committee staff who worked on this, and thank you to my team. I urge my colleagues to stand with me and vote yes.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Reporter of the Committee on Aging, Intro 1092A, Educational Materials for Older Adults.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Reporter of the Committee on Children and Youth, Intro 9B, Legal Services, Notifications.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 794A, Youth Board.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Reporter of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 1061A, Department of Correction Reports.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Reporter of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered LU 242 and Reso 785 and Pre-Considered LU 243 and Reso 786 Tax Exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered M 111 and Reso 787 and Pre-Considered M 112 and Reso 788 Council Budget.
Coupled on general orders.
Reporter of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, Intro 565A, Confidential Voter Records.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Reporter of the Committee on Public Safety, Intro 1101A, Identity Theft.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Reporter of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intro 498A, Community Gardens.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1126A, Waste Containers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar, LU 212 and Reso 789 and LU 213 and Reso 790, 441 and 467, Prospect Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Joseph.
I vote aye on all.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye on all.
Banks.
Aye on all.
Botcher.
Aye on all.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye on all.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all. Congratulations, everyone.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Today, I'm excited to speak in support of the Arrow-Lincoln rezoning in my district. Through a community-driven process, we were able to secure important changes that strengthened affordability and addressed concerns about building height. Initially, the proposal called for two 13-story buildings at 25% affordability under the R71 zoning. However, through the City of Yes initiative, we successfully negotiated a more fitting R7A plan, lowering the height to 10 stories and 250 units with no unit loss. In addition, we increased the affordability to 40%, ensuring that 100 units will be offered at below-market rates. We also secured a separate R6B zoning for the area within the U shape between the two Arrow-Lincoln buildings, addressing concerns about potential future speculation and ensuring the inclusion of mandatory inclusionary housing affordability. In addition, we finalized a comprehensive community benefits agreement, which will be managed by the Fifth Avenue Committee. This agreement includes the creation of a childcare center and a subsidized domestic violence survivors space operated by Saki for South Asian survivors. It also establishes a construction task force and ensures the implementation of essential resiliency and flood mitigation infrastructure. Furthermore, we reached an agreement with the 2BJ to ensure that this project will generate good local union jobs. I want to express my gratitude to every constituent who shared their thoughts through the public review process, thanks to Housing Not Highrises, Community Board 7, the Windsor Terrace Community, for your advocacy. The project is much stronger because of your engagement. Finally, I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to Speaker Adams, Chair Riley, Chair Salamanca, Borough President Reynoso, State Senator Myrie, Perestrader, Brian Paul, Gabriela Valerio, Arthur Ha, Mara Davis, Matt Malloy, Mus Lamia, Alex Lea, and my land use director, Mia Perez, who led these complex negotiations and deserves commendation for bringing this important project to the council today. Thank you. And I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Hanks.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all.
Marte.
Aye.
Thank you. Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Powers.
Aye on all.
Wrestler.
Aye. Congrats to Councilmember Hanif.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye. Aye on all.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
Aye on all.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Thank you. Zhuang.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills. All bills have been referred to the committees as indicated on today's agenda. Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Schulman, followed by Hudson.
Thank you. I want to ask everyone to vote yes on pre-considered Resolution 782A. What it is, is basically in 2019, there's monies that are reimbursed back to every county in the state of New York for community health services, and New York State decided in 2019 to take some of that money away from New York City. So that results in up to $90 million being taken from the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene for community health services that affect every district. I want to thank the Speaker for being an unwavering champion on this, and there's legislation in the state now to get that money back to us, and we've been fighting this since I've been in the council and Chair of the Health Committee, and I urge my colleagues to please vote yes. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I'd also like to briefly discuss Resolution 561, which calls on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass legislation and the governor to sign that would establish a statewide network of nonprofit guardians to meet the growing demand for services while expanding capacity in communities where guardianship programs don't yet exist. For too long, access to ethical, high-quality guardianship has been inconsistent, leaving too many older adults and New Yorkers with disabilities without the support they need. By fully funding nonprofit guardianship, we'll meet the need for the system while removing the potential harm of a profit-motivated guardian that we're all too familiar with. I urge my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 561 calls upon the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass and the governor to sign legislation to create a statewide public guardianship system to address current inequities and deficits and safeguard vulnerable New Yorkers in need of protective arrangements. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Pre-considered Resolution 782-A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign Assembly Bill 2705 and Senate Bill 4801 relating to the amount of state aid reimbursement for public health services by a municipality in the city of New York when the municipality is providing some or all of certain identified core public health services. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first recognize Minority Leader Ariola, followed by Councilmember Hanif, then Hudson.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The Republican Delegation and Common Sense Caucus has several solution-oriented bills that members have introduced, which have bipartisan support that I'd like to discuss here today. Councilmember Palladino has introduced Intro 60, a local law to amend the Administrative Code of the City of New York in relation to prohibiting the operation of electric scooters, bicycles, with electric assists in our parks. Councilmember Robert Holden has a bill, Intro 606, which would require every bicycle with electric assist, electric scooter, and other legal motorized vehicle that is, in other words, not required to be registered with the DMV, to be registered with the DOT, and receive an identifying number which would be displayed on a visible plate affixed to the vehicle. Councilmember Mamorato has introduced Intro 1002. This bill would require all schools to stock airway clearance devices, a life-saving device that would be a tool for school personnel to use while waiting for first responders to arrive. Councilmember Susan Zhuang put forth Intro 907, which would require the Police Department, in collaboration with the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications, and any other relevant agency, to use a quarterly report on locations in which persons are squatting in this city. Councilmember David Carr has introduced Intro 1166, which would amend the existing community notification requirement to require the Department of Homeless Services to notify elected officials and community boards for affected areas when an emergency homeless shelter contract is renewed. Our veterans are extremely important to our caucus and this body, and that is why I'd like to discuss a number of bills dedicated to ending homelessness for those who have risked their everything for our country. Councilmember Vernikov has sponsored Intro 465, which would require an annual report from the Department of Housing Preservation and Development on the amount of veterans applying for housing in the city-run Mitchell Lama Developments, and amount of veterans being selected for occupancy and documenting requirements and safeguards in place.
Minority Leader, your time has expired.
Okay, and just Reso 465, that's mine. Please sign on, please support. These are bills that we can all get behind, and we'd love to see them pass in this body, heard, passed, and enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Hanif, followed by Hudson, then Zhuang.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing the Afirm Act, Intro 1201, alongside Councilmembers Botcher, Rivera, Osay, Wrestler, Hudson, Nurse, and De La Rosa, and Brooklyn Borough President Reynoso. In the 1990s and 2000s, the council responded to violent protests at reproductive health clinics by passing and strengthening the clinic access law, which established protections for reproductive health patients and the providers who serve them.
for reproductive health patients and the providers who serve them. The Afirm Act would expand these protections to also cover facilities that provide gender-affirming care. If passed, the bill would prohibit unsafe activities that impede physical access to facilities providing gender-affirming care, including blocking doors, harassing patients within 15 feet of entrances, and interfering with facility operations. This bill will be heard at tomorrow's Women and Gender Equity Committee hearing. I encourage my colleagues to join as a sponsor and champion access to essential health care. I would also like to take a moment to thank my outgoing Education and Land Use Director, Mia Perez, who has served District 39 with distinction for more than three years. Mia has led an impressive array of infrastructure projects, including five rezonings, the Gowanus Oversight Task Force, the Lich Task Force, the Brooklyn Marine Terminal Task Force, the Brooklyn Queens Expressway Visioning, the NICA Comprehensive Modernization, and the Ninth Street Bike Lane, just to name a few. Mia has been a tireless advocate for our students and families, touring every school in our district with me, raising funds for Title I schools through our annual fund run, and organizing against budget cuts. Her work has strengthened our communities and will leave a lasting impact on District 39 for years to come. Mia, thank you for everything you've done.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Zhuang, then Brewer.
Thank you, and good afternoon yet again, colleagues. I'd like to take a brief moment to discuss a resolution I'm introducing alongside a package of bills my colleagues in the LGBTQIA+ Caucus are introducing today. Resolution 774 calls on the New York State Department of Health to implement regulations requiring hospitals in New York City to adhere to the World Professional Association for Transgender Health Standards of Care 8, to ensure medical professionals can provide high-quality and ethical treatment for transgender nonconforming and non-binary individuals. The federal government is making consistent and aggressive efforts to undermine the rights of the trans community, and as a member of the New York City Council's LGBTQIA+ Caucus and its former co-chair, I'm proud that our body is matching its solidarity with real action. And I'd like to thank Speaker Adams for her fierce allyship and unwavering leadership, as well as Councilmember Lewis for holding Friday's hearing and her support of the LGBTQI+ community. This legislative package works to improve standards for trans health care, strengthen privacy measures, protect access to gender-affirming care, and takes crucial steps to uphold fundamental human rights at both the city and state level. And these bills will not only protect our transgender nonconforming and non-binary neighbors, but will also safeguard all New Yorkers, because when our most vulnerable communities are protected, everyone benefits. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Zhuang, followed by Brewer, then De La Rosa.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I send before you today to once again urge everyone to support Intro 907, legislation that could require NYPD, HPD 311, and other relative city agency to track and publish data on homes with squatters. This is critical information. We need to prevent future divisions. As our speaker just mentioned today, I had a fire in my district. This is a house with squatter there. This is six fire in just three years. A squatter died in the fire. When, and then this fire spread to neighbor's house. This left 16 innocent neighbors homeless, hard-working immigrant families with small children, some of them leaving their cars now. These families did everything right, yet they lost everything because of dangers and illegal squatting. Sadly, it's not the isolated instance. Illegal squatting is a citywide crisis, and it can happen in any one of our districts. Squatters often restore unsafe method of heating or electric, putting entire community at risk. How many more fires? How many more families left homeless? How many more lives lost before we act? The solution start with better data. We need to equip the city agency with the tools to understand and address this issue. Without access tracking, we are leaving homeowners, tenants, and the entire neighborhood vulnerable. Last week, the tragedy was able to prevent it. It's preventable, and if we fail to act, we will see more tragedies. And I ask my dear colleagues, please sign on Intro 907. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by De La Rosa, then Lewis.
Thank you. I just want to say I am a big supporter of interns, as we all are. I want to introduce Stephanie Jenkins. You should stand up, Stephanie, from Fordham University, and Noah Siegelson, who is a student at Columbia School of Social Work. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember De La Rosa, followed by Lewis.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to join Speaker Adams today in celebrating the Dominican diaspora across our city, state, and nation as we celebrate 181 years of independence. Dominican Independence Day provides a special opportunity for us to pay tribute to the countless Dominicans and Dominican-Americans who have made New York City such an extraordinary place to live. Our profound contribution has shaped all areas of society and culture, economy, politics, government for generations. Last night, we had a wonderful, vibrant event, and I just want to take the opportunity to say out loud, as I do every day, hailing from Washington Heights, Que Viva la República Dominicana. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce two critical resolutions, Resolutions 775 and 776, focused on dignity and burial and equity in education. REZO 775 calls on New York State to raise the funeral cost limit for low-income residents from 3,400 to 6,000. In this day and age, families already struggling financially are left without the means to provide a dignified burial for their loved ones. This issue became painfully clear in the wake of the 2024 West Indian American Day Carnival Parade, when Denzel Chan, a resident of Council District 45, was tragically killed by gun violence. His family, already grieving the loss of their loved one, was denied full burial assistance because their funeral expenses exceeded the current cap. Despite months of effort to secure support, they were left struggling to cover the basic costs of laying him to rest. No family should have to choose between honoring their loved one and financial ruin. By increasing this limit, we can ensure that all New Yorkers, regardless of income, have access to the dignified burial services they deserve. REZO 776 urges CUNY to collect and publicly report data on its Associate Degree Apprenticeship Program broken down by gender, age, ethnicity, and income. Apprenticeships are proven pathways to stable careers, but must ensure that access is equitable. Women, students of color, and low-income students deserve the same opportunities to build meaningful careers in growing industries. Transparency is the first step in closing these gaps. As we push for these changes, we must also fight back against the dangerous ideologies being forced upon our communities by the federal administration, whether it's dismantling DEI initiatives that help level the playing field for marginalized groups, or stripping education, the rights and freedoms of immigrants or communities of color. So I urge my colleagues to support REZOS 775 and 776. I also want to give a shout-out to Joy Ann Reed, the first Black woman to anchor primetime TV news on a major cable network, who was removed, and we stand with her. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Mealy.
I would like to just ask everyone to give the condolence of my former staff, Anna Lipkin. Her husband passed yesterday, Ravel Lipkin. He has been a community leader, worker. He worked for Senator Carl Andrews, well, when he was the Senator, Eric Adams. Then he worked for Jesse Hamilton. Anything the community needed, he was there, and he was the in-between to the Caribbean, African-American, his city Jewish community, and he was a leader. And I just hope that everyone could give their condolences to Anna Lipkin. She worked with me for eight years. Today is the funeral. It's over now, but she will be having shiva for seven days. So I just want the city to know that we lost someone that was for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Please send our condolences. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you. The stated meeting of February 27, 2025 is hereby adjourned.